Next item, uh, we're gonna do roll call for the next, uh, meeting item. For the regular meeting, sure.
Here.
I'm gonna have them have to ask. I'm so confused and we. Over the regular meeting and I have to ask a motion to flip flop. I can't change the agenda like that. Here.
Here.
Present.
Present.
Presence. Um, so, next item, I'm going to ask for the, um, board to, uh, recommend that we, um, make a motion to discuss the committee of the whole items at this time and flip flop the, uh, regular meeting and the committee, the whole meeting. Um, and I'm also going to, uh, make a recommendation, um, based on, um, where we are in the process to pull items eighteen through twenty-one from the regular business agenda related to easements for Grim Road. Um, do I have a motion and a second? Motion trustee Maisick? Second trustee, uh, Berman, any discussion on this? Alright, roll call please.
Yes.
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 Aye.
Maisick?
Yes.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Alright, um, I'm gonna move on to citizens wishing to address the board. Uh, do we have anybody that signed up?
Yes.
Okay, pass that down. Thank you.
The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a comment to make about the business of the board. Board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. The board strives to make the best decisions for the village and public input is very helpful. The board must protect the civility and decorum of this meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board and the democratic process in your comments tonight. Please state your name and address your comments to the board. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please be factual and courteous and the board requests that you not make statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. To the extent multiple speakers are addressing a single issue, the mayor of the meeting reserves the right to limit the number of speakers making public comment of a repetitive nature and or limit the amount of time for public comment. The board does not respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during the public comment period. Uh, and we have Mary Domeniak.
Mary Domeniac. Um, couple of things that I would like to address the board. Uh, first of all, I want to thank, uh, Village for fixing Landmark Way. We have lived with, uh, uh, flooded street for many years and the road program, they fixed it. So knock on wood, so far it's going well. Um, secondly, I wanted to just, um, say that I thought the Christmas parade this year was really great. A lot more floats, a lot more lights. It was really very well done. Um, but kind of tagging on to that, I noticed that the village Christmas decorations have not been put up this year, so I'd like to ask for, um, some consideration to have that put up. There usually are wreaths and stuff on the light bulb. Um, also wanted to comment on how well the parade went, but the next day was Small Shop Saturday and, um, I thought in the past, when I had the privileges sitting up there with you all, or most of you, that, um, we would sweep the streets before we invited all these people to come to shop into Antioch and it was really nasty, the stuff that was littered all over the place. So I'm hoping that that could be something that could be addressed for the future. Um, the other thing I wanted to bring up was, um, the crosswalk on Main Street. Um, I know that a letter was sent to IDOT to ask, uh, for them to consider allowing us to improve the commu-, uh, the, uh, crosswalk right across Main Street by putting in some kind of a device that people could push a button and it would start to flash and people would stop. This is a passion of mine, obviously, but it was really earmarked by the fact that a couple of weeks ago I was here for a meeting and when I left and went south on Main Street, two people in dark clothes ran across the street and I had to slam on the brakes because you couldn't see them. So any effort that we could, or that you all could address, um, to try and expedite that project, I think would be a public safety issue that should be addressed or could be addressed. Um, the other thing that I wanted to, I know I'm talking fast because I know I've got a timeline here. Um, the other thing I wanted to ask is for the board to take action against Terry Upton's property on one seventy-three. There are boats being parked there. There are other big, heavy equipment that's been sitting there for years and I would suspect that that's a violation of code and, and it's really an eyesore when you come into town. And then the only other thing that I wanted to add was, um, at one of your meetings, you were talking about why the restaurant size and the ordinance is two thousand square feet. And for those of you that are new to the board and to refresh everybody else's memory, um, that ordinance was written that way because we were trying to hold off the number of, uh, betting parlors or gaming parlors. And so um, there wasn't really an attempt to say that if you had fourteen hundred square feet, you couldn't have a restaurant, but it was an attempt to make gaming available to entities that were truly restaurants, um, to get a liquor license and not have all the Bettys and Suzies and Stella's and everything else that, um, was who were coming to the village, excuse me, to ask for liquor licenses. So I just wanted to clarify that because I know you're probably gonna take a look at that and that was a rationale for it. So other than that, I hope everybody has a fabulous holiday and, um, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, next item on the agenda is approval of the November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three committee, the hall meeting minutes as presented. Do I have a motion and a second? So move. Motion trustee Bluthard.
Second.
Second trustee Peterson, roll call please.
Oh, sorry.
Committee the hall.
Um. Yes, sorry.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Um, next item is a, uh, strand update on the open space development. Uh, Mike Jansen and Zach Simpson are here in person. Thanks for making the trip.
Thank you, Mike Jansen, and, uh, thank you for allowing us to, uh, move up on the agenda here. Um, my name is Mike Jansen, uh, with Strand and I'm the structural engineer record for the, for the project and been here a few times in person and, uh, a few times, uh, virtual. It's nice to see, uh, uh, the familiar faces and I see there's a couple, uh, few new faces as well, so. Um, my colleague Zach will, uh, walk through, um, the, uh, construction updates. We appreciate the opportunity to do that and just has a few slides and then we'll certainly do uh, our best to answer any questions. So I'll turn it over to Zach.
Yeah, again, Zach Simpson with Strand and the project manager, uh, basically through design and construction. Um, we're gonna talk just briefly about kind of like updates related to cost for the project and we'll kind of touch on schedule a little bit too and then with Mike's, we'll answer any questions you guys might have.
I'm sorry.
Yes, are you just?
Speak it up. I can't hear you. I got old ears.
Is it better if I just talk?
Yeah.
Super close to mine?
Yeah.
Okay. You want me to do that all over again?
No.
So, if you wanna go with the second slide. So just a reminder, when this project was bid, we used the unit cost bid method. So there's a kind of a laundry list of bid items, um, and quantities that generate a bid from each contractor that are, that is then used to compare bids and accept the bid or reject a bid. Um, and the reason we did that is so that to some extent the bids are adjustable, so not all quantities are, um, necessarily realized. There's give and take on some of them. So, um, we've gone through an exercise where we, we've projected out the cost of the project, um, when it's finished by looking at the unit cost bid and the changes that we've seen to date and projecting that to the end of the project. So, um, there's various types of contract changes and I'll talk about those in a second. Um, and again, this is just meant to give you guys a snapshot of where we're at during construction of this project and, um, kind of let you know where things are headed. So I guess I'll also talk about progress. So there's kind of two different ways we can look at that. One is to look at what you have paid so far and that would be in the form of pay requests and the changes that have been approved. And to date, you've paid the contractor one point, a little over one point five million, which is about twelve percent of the total contract. And the second way to look at that is to look forward and see, and we've talked to Josh Boulders actually here, but we talked to him this morning about what he's got um, in materials stored and all the work completed that hasn't necessarily been submitted in the form of a pay application. And when you look at it that way, it's almost double. So we're at about twenty-five percent of the way through the project. So the table at the bottom here is meant to, to show you a snapshot of where we're at today based on everything that we know. Um, and I'll just kind of go through line by line. The top line is the total unit price quantities from the original bid and then the projected next to it. Um, below that, we have total anticipated change orders, um, to date and that's the two hundred ninety-four thousand dollar number. And then the bottom one, um, just obviously adds those two together. But when you look at the projected total because of the reduction in the unit price work, um, and then the addition of the changes, we're actually under our original contract amount. So we're under that by about negative point seven percent. So I guess I, moving on to the next slide, I just wanna talk a little bit about some of the changes that we're experiencing, experiencing and there's a couple of different types of change orders and they're not always positive. I think there's kind of a stigma with the change order, but um, you know, we can adjust the contract by bid quantity or by revisions in several different ways. Um, they're generated by changes in conditions, owner requests sometimes. Um, and then we're able to make revisions, um, kind of as the project continues along to try and save some, some money too. So examples of changes in conditions would be, um, dealing with earthwork and, um, I guess specifically material classification, how that material has to be handled. So at this site, I think most people know that there was a fair amount of environmental work to do. Um, we realized a pretty significant overage on non-special waste hauling for the, for the, for the excavation. Uh, but we also realized, or we think we're going to realize about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in savings in our bid quantities through undercut or excavation below subgrade and the backfill that goes with it. So the net there is about a fifty thousand dollar increase. Um, another example would be, uh, the, the bridge piles for the pedestrian bridge. Um, we realized a reduced quantity for that installation, um, after it was installed. There was about a forty-three thousand dollar savings with, with the bridge pile installation. Um, the next group, kind of grouping or, or example, um, changes are for changes to the building that were, that our owner requested betterment. So a lot of times in construction, there are things that are realized kind of ongoing that might improve the project or the final product. And in this case, um, the village elected to add a nano wall, uh, to the concession structure. And then electric door strikes is another, another example of a, an increase. And then the last example, I just wanna kind of quickly touch on some cost saving provisions that were made to the design. Um, Depot, Depot Street was originally bid out or included in, in the quantities as a full reconstruction. And we've modified that to, to kind of limit the amount of Depot Street that's reconstructed. And we're gonna do a melon overlay for a good portion of it. Um, and that's gonna result in a, a net savings of over a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, other savings that we looked at were related to lighting and electrical. Um, and there's kind of a, a list of things here, but we've reduced the, um, EV charging stations from two down to one unit with two chargers. So that was a, a savings of about sixteen thousand. Um, we're able to reduce the number of uplights. We had the Lakota Group look back at the uplighting that was proposed for the project. And we think we can accomplish the same amount of lighting effects with less uplights. So we're gonna realize the savings there. Guess the bottom line with the lighting and electrical items, we can, we can save about fifty-four thousand dollars. Um, and then the last example is just, uh, related to site furnishings. So we, we contacted the suppliers directly and, and asked about having the owner direct purchase the furnishings because there's really not an installation for a lot of them. It's taking delivery and, um, Dennis and his staff has um, agreed to just take delivery of it and place the furnishings at the site and that generated this pretty significant savings of over twenty thousand dollars. So those are some examples. There, there are more we can talk through if you guys have questions, but I just wanted to kind of point out that not all changes are increases. We're, we're, we're trying to rein the project in. You know, there's, there's been a lot of underground and material handling that's, that was unexpected. So we're trying to kind of bring, bring back or level out, uh, the contract price. We go, yeah. So schedule and progress, um, as many of you probably know or have tried to see through the screening around the site, there is progress being made. Um, the contractor is working on the third of the three, um, more significant structures on the site right now and the channel work i- at the bottom of the channel, all the stonework is has basically been placed with the exception of the very upstream end near Orchard Street. Um, just to kind of give you a just a taste of how we track the schedule. Um, Boulders required to provide a, a monthly schedule update. And then they also provide a two-week look ahead. So we can share these more often if you guys would like to see uh, specific schedule updates, but, um, generally speaking, just city staff and the mayor's um, been reviewing these. Um, there are two milestones within the contract, um, November first and January thirty-first. And those were both incorporated into the contract for funding purposes. Um, the village had received a a significant grant award through DCO. And there are requirements for that money to be spent by a certain date. So those, those milestones jive with that. Um, our understanding is that there's been an extension though granted for, for those.
I can confirm that. Yes. We did get the extension for six months with the possibility of further
Yep.
A couple of months. So that
Yep.
That was the two point some million dollars DCO.
Correct.
Yeah.
So we, while we have, we did not meet the first milestone, it sounds like we've got an extension through the grant folks for that. Um, probably the most significant thing to note is that the final completion date of June thirtieth, um, of next year, we're still on track for. The most recent schedule update from Bowler uh, provided a, a finish date of June tenth. So there's still a few weeks of float in there, um, that we haven't used up yet. So with that, I guess we'll open the, open it up to questions if you guys have any.
Um, I'll start, uh, on this side. You guys, questions, Katrina or trustee Berman? Trustee Bluthard? This side, trustee Pierce?
Well, I'm glad to hear we're, we're on track and we're looking to be point six eight percent below contracted price. Hopefully we stay there. Um, I do have questions though about, uh, the street. Why was it, what difference does just milling and not doing a full reconstruction do to us?
So for a full reconstruction, we'd, we'd have to fully excavate out the existing base course and pavement. So there's a net say, are you asking why we're doing it or what the difference?
Why, wha- what's the difference and why did we make?
Sure.
I know for money purposes, we decided to mill it.
Yep.
With the exception of the part we're c- carving out for parking.
Yep. So the, yeah, the, the, I guess in, in height, like when we were designing the project, it gave us more flexibility with the grades to pull everything out and rebuild it. Um, and we realized that there's actually concrete pavement beneath the existing pavement, um, is part of the construction. So, uh, city staff recommended that we take a second look at that and see if we can make it, make the grades work with what's there. And, uh, it, it turns out it, it actually works pretty well. We only have to reconstruct about two hundred feet, I believe, or a hundred and fifty feet where we've got, um, storms were crossing the road or crossing the road. Um,
Okay, that answered that question. As I look at your nice drawing you got here, it's got like six handicap parking spots.
Okay.
Yeah. And the handicap parking spots are split by the, the, the loading ramp area that each vehicle needs. I'm just kind of concerned that it's only on one side. So you gotta force one car to back in and the other car to go in forward and then you may have people trying to load up their ramps battling with each other.
Yeah.
Why are we not making sure that each handicap spot gets a ramp area?
That's, uh, that's a good comment, actually, um. So this is a rendering from early on. I'd have to double check and make sure that wasn't already fixed. But we can take a look at that.
Okay. And then my other concern, you mentioned that EV parking space has been reduced to two and and this is more of a, a policy question for the board, not for you.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure that we're not, once people plug in, we're not paying for their, their electricity. If they're, they're set up to be a charge, put it in a credit card or something to pay and not the village taxpayers.
There's, there's ones out there that'll do it for nothing. It's pretty advertised.
I, I feel like
Yeah, I realize that, but.
I feel like there was some discussion about this regarding, I don't know how you would monitor this, if there were a village resident versus a non-village resident, but I don't remember all that discussion went.
I think whoever plugs in has to pay.
Level two charger's only doing two hours and it's shut off.
Alright.
So, yeah. Okay, good question. Um.
Alright, that's it. That's it for me to delay us tonight.
Trustee Maisick? Trustee Peterson? I just, a couple of comments, Zach, before you go. So, um, one thing I learned through these meetings and I don't mean to put you on the spot on this is, um, you know, most of the extras that we're encountering in this are all related to things, you know, below subgrade that we didn't know were there. Um, how far through the underground, you know, subgrade work are we through? Are we through seventy, I mean, seventy percent of this, the subgrade?
So we were just talking about this before the meeting. It's probably closer to ninety percent.
Okay, so that's where the surprise is, yeah.
We're what, twenty feet from the down, or from the upstream structure? So.
And then the other one was, um, I don't, don't, don't wanna put us on the spot on this. We, do we ever make a decision regarding the clock tower and?
Yeah, it's staying.
Okay, we'd, so that's another savings that's coming. Originally they had it moving the clock tower and like, why would we move it five feet for?
All of that is gonna be there? All of that?
Just the clock itself is staying. The, there's a kind of a, a planting bed or an island around.
Why would we take that out?
Uh, we have to, we do have to update the ramps, sidewalk ramps around it. Um, and there's kind of a node going in at that corner. That's a different material. So.
Okay.
And as part of our, our happy day on June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four, turning on the power so we can get off nine twelve in the morning or evening.
All the clock being out?
Yeah.
Then we're gonna do like a Back to the Future. We're gonna have you drive the car down. Be lighted. Any other questions? This is helpful. Thank you. We'll do another one, maybe, you know, springtime. Hopefully the weather stays. I'm not wishing, wishing anybody a merry, like a white Christmas. I like this weather for the constructions. Let's keep it forty-five and keep it forty-five and out there working. So. Alright, thank you. Thanks for coming up here. Or down here, right? Madison? Okay. Alright, um, item number three, the presenters requested to, um, push that to the next meeting, which will be the tenth of January. Um, next item is discussion regarding the twenty twenty-four Chamber of Commerce events. Um, chamber director Barbara Porch is here to present that item.
Thank you for your time. I've presented our twenty twenty-four calendar of events that utilize village property. Um, you will notice the Taste of Summer is back in there minus a carnival. There was some discussion after the last time we were before you. If you meant to deny the entire taste or the carnival portion of the taste. So we, that's why we're back before you tonight.
So for reference, the way the ordinance was drafted, it read as if we denied the Taste of Antioch completely. But I think it was my understanding in the boards that we were just discussing, discussing the carnival portion at that time as well as the change in the date. So that was why she was here for clarification on that item as well. Um, and then we had met with, um, the chamber and, um, she showed us the other, um, events. I don't see that. Mine's not showing. My iPad goofy. Something's going on with my iPad. So, um, yeah, mine's a little wrong thing. Yeah, so all the events are in the packet, not my packet, there you go. Um, so any questions from the trustees about these dates, these events? Start on this, trustee Maisick?
So I got one for Chamber. So you, and I said this last year. Putting a lot of strain on the village, especially our police officers. You're asking them to work overtime. And I'll ask you your opinion, what's more dangerous, drunk cop or retired cop when they gotta make split decisions? You make all the money, village pays the expense. They do all the work. They do all the overtime, we're paying the bill. We get no, I mean, you're bringing people to downtown, I get that. One hundred percent, I get that. But you're straining our police force, you're straining public works. I asked you last time to bring, to look at bringing security in there, like felony, whatever. Cause our cops right now, their police officers, men and women, they are strained. And they ask them to work overtime. You bring a tired police officer's got to make, uh, split this, uh, split second decision and you can't do that because they're tired, you're in life or death. And I don't think it's fair to them or their family. So I, I've asked you last year, every time this comes up with summer and all these, all these events to come up with a solution for security. Cause you're, you're getting the, you're getting the reaping of all that money. And you don't have to put a dime back for security. You're asking the taxpayers in the village to put up our, our, our men and women, police officers, our public works people do all the heavy lifting. I don't think that's right. And I'd hate to see one of our officers get hurt because they're tired. And they make mistakes. One mistake could land someone out of the job. Maybe, you know, prison. Officer's gotta be always thinking sharp and it's not fair to them. And I don't wanna see anybody lose their immunity because they were tired and they weren't thinking sharp. And I think it's they shouldn't be alone on this thinking, but you, you, you gotta start thinking, getting the chamber, it's getting to be a big event. You gotta get security. You're getting the realms of all the money. And you're, and you're draining our men and women. It's not, it's not fair.
Um, trustee Peterson, did you have your hand up?
No, I didn't.
Here, trustee Pierce?
Okay, um, this is for trustee Maisick. I just want clarification. Um, do you mean just for the Taste of Antioch for private security or off duty police or you may mean every event?
No, that's talking to larger events, yeah.
What about our other organizations in town that have larger events? I mean, I, I don't disagree. There's an offensive cost and a stress, but I don't know how we draw the line of it. I'm just, that's all.
You're gonna disagree with me with some
I, I'm not.
And everything. And, and, and
I, I just.
You, you, let's just take Lions Club. As an example, Lions Club gives, gives, gives money back to community. So they give money back to the police department in different funds. They give money back. Okay? They, they all give money back. So Chamber, they keep them.
So, look.
I just want, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. Oh, and trustee Pierce, I want him to finish. I, I understand. Trustee Pierce, uh, finish your question.
I, I was just wanting clarification.
Yeah, that's, that's all.
I wasn't going against you. I was just, just wanting clarification on that issue.
Chicken barbecue. I mean, that organization is by donation and they do, they, they, that all money goes back to the community.
I, I just wanted clarification how we delineate.
So.
All I want, but I'm not done, your honor.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, the other, the other items on here, I, the, the date here, you've mentioned there's a date change on the, the taste or was that the same date you originally proposed with?
Before you tonight is the normal third Saturday of July Taste of Summer date.
Okay.
When I was before you earlier, we had asked for a date change because if we were to use that new carnival, that was the only date they had.
That was a week before.
Right, that is off the table.
Okay, so that's off the table. And then the other thing I noticed you had on here was, uh, Holly Jolly Shop Hop?
Yes. That's for, um, our downtown merchants to have a day prior to Shop Small Sa- Saturday where they can have like a holiday open house.
Okay. I do happen to know Santa Claus likes, um, hot chocolate and cookies.
I have heard that.
And he may show up if they were there.
Alright, so as far as the, um, cost discussion about, um, public services, I think as a board, we should have a discussion if there's gonna be a policy or an IGA or something that we're gonna look into going forward on that. Trustee Luther?
Um, if I could, uh, Chief Gutshau can I ask a question? Uh, a view on that? In past years, have you had any issues regarding staffing these events or any issues surrounding these events with the number of borough officers or anything that would run us or make us want to look into more like the trustee Mason's referring to?
There's no doubt that holding large events like that puts a strain on our resources. As you know, uh, our, our staffing numbers have challenged us over the last couple of years. I knock on wood and say hopefully there's light at the end of the tunnel for that. We'll have to evaluate the new event as it's being revamped by the chamber. Uh, one of the large contributors to many of the issues that we had historically was tied to the large attendance at the carnival. So with this being a new event, we may have an opportunity to scale back somewhat on the number of law enforcement resources we have to allocate. Um, but again, you know, with, with the village, ho- holding more and more events, trying to draw more and more people, yes, there is an inherent strain on resources that, that we do struggle with at times.
Yeah, thank you. Alright, thank you. Um. So we'll move this, um, for board action at the next board meeting. Alright?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Um, next item is, last item on the committee, the whole presentation from Placer related to business analytics, uh, where I guess we have Ryan Denisee and Jeremy O'Neil from Placer on Zoom.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, good evening, mayor trustees, madam clerk and village council. I'm coming to you tonight to present a much needed tool to utilize, uh, to be utilized by business development, event department, as well as parks department. The world of analytics and measurable metrics is quickly advancing. And this will provide the village real-time data to make educated decisions on future expenses and infrastructure. Placer software will allow the village to take the guesswork out of usage of many of our parks, recreational locations, as well as event participation. The platform will help us attract business and provide crucial information to help, um, existing businesses uh, that are in our area now, um, thrive. Um, I asked, uh, Placer Senior Executive Ryan Denisi, as well as Placer Director Jeremy O'Neil to provide a brief background on the software as a service and how it will help the village moving forward. So they are on here.
Hey folks. Thank you for the introduction. Hi, everyone. Good evening. I'm going to share my screen with you all and we do have the prepared slides that you guys have. And there's only a few additional ones I added based on the fact that you guys have been provided some additional information that we shared on the initial demo. And I wanted to give that specifics as we go through a couple of examples live there locally for a location there in your village. This should not be more than about five to ten minutes at the most, and then we will of course have time for questions. As we jump into this today, starting off just as a quick, a brief introduction on who Placer is. I'm going to share quickly how we get our data. How do other cities ultimately are using our data to prevent, benefit the cities? So you get examples. Um, also examples of other cities locally there in Illinois and villages nearby. Also privacy, um, how we get our data and how we're not collecting any personal identifiable data. We'll jump into not really a demo, but just some examples of the slides that we provided in the demo that you guys already have access to and you're looking at. And then we'll save some time for, and for any questions, we will also discuss the pricing, just share that with you as well for what you get for the price. So real quickly on the background of who Placer is. So ultimately, as a company as a whole, we've been selling commercially for over six years. Uh, we now work with over three thousand plus customers. We are considered the gold standard in this space. As a whole, we work with thirty plus different industries. Civic, of course, is our main focus here today. That's where Jeremy and I work with. But ultimately, we work in many other spaces, including like the retail space as examples of our customers. Big box retailers, you might think of Best Buy, Target, Walmart, Google, Amazon, to name a few of our customers in this space on that regard. In Civic, we are now working with north of seven hundred and fifty customers. We're growing at a rate of five new customers a day right now. Customers in this same space that we work with include cities like yourselves, villages, counties, districts, economic development organizations, travel and tourism DMOs, chambers of commerce, downtowns, conference centers, pretty much anyone civic related, you name it, we're working with. I did include, uh, a few of the very many Illinois customers, but of course, these are nearby, um, and similar also in size too. The, the villages of Fox Lake, Orland Park, Oak Brook, One A, Le Mans and Romeoville. Ultimately, that gives you an idea of customers who we work with, both on a local basis as well as national. This slide also represents what we work with our customers on. It doesn't limit to this, but these are some of our most popular use cases as we've described and talked to on our live demos. But the type of data that's gonna be available and accessible for you as a village. Um, some that really stood out, including the retail recruitment component, any type of events that you guys are having, and we will provide some examples here momentarily. Um, transportation, infrastructure, any of your parks and open spaces, um, your workforce analysis. So in addition to all of these other ones, um, marketing, supporting local businesses and any travelers and tourism coming into your village as well. So a couple of slides here really giving you a highlight before I give you examples locally of that example, but ultimately attracting the best retailer, retailers. We understand retail recruitment's important for you. That's a big way that we're able to provide that for you here, just giving you some examples of different industries and different businesses of how we provide that examples of why they're a good fit. Marketing efforts, ultimately understanding where your visitors are coming from. And with this regard, understanding where you're coming from, we can validate and ultimately get that ROI. I, with certainty, of course, knowing where your visitors are coming from to know to target them for future visitations. Or to evaluate specific events that you guys are having, you know, how is one event compared to another? Or year-over-year variance out compared to past, to of course, give validation to continue having that event, to get funding, to get sponsors.
Staff it.
This kind of dives in a little bit deeper.
You're, you're, you're getting a little wonky.
Am I getting wonky? You want to take over? My, is my internet not working well?
Uh, I think it's good enough, but I'm on, I have everything up on standby. Keep going.
Okay. Please let, let me know, everyone, if you can't hear me. Had some internet issues this week. Um, just carrying on from the local events and the measure and, uh, of, from a marketing perspective, again, really targeting, I mean, specific events, specific locations, they're over and out. So overall, we'll get into in-depth, uh, examples, but ultimately what does differentiate with Placer's data? You know, we are unparalleled with accuracy ranging from ninety percent to above ninety-eight percent. Our coverage across the entire nation, um, as far as what we look at and how we're pulling our data. But as I mentioned at the very top, we're not collecting any personal identifiable data. And third-party marketplaces looking at specific demographics, psychographic data. This just gives you a different, uh, addition example of how we are ultimately getting our data from an accuracy perspective with examples of retailers that we work with. And the examples of hi, how inaccurate we are with those particular businesses. Ultimately, we are the highest though in the industry. Give you a little bit more in depth on how we are getting that data. We have built relationships and partnerships with different mobile applications. So think of apps that are on like your iPhone or your Android. These are apps that are running twenty-four seven, but think of an app like your weather app. So when you download that weather app, you're not sharing any personal information. You just want to know what the weather's like there in your village in Antioch. So ultimately, that's through our partnerships, how we create our panel. And through those partnerships, we at Placer are then obtaining data from roughly thirty million mobile devices to provide the data that you're seeing and getting for any of these locations, events that you're looking for for your use cases. Again, no personal identifiable data, we're not getting any, in, specific information. And it's never shared. This just gives you a nice representation of the third-party data sets that we also describe that we work with. So we work with additional on top of just your traditional census data sets, but a few, uh, demographic and psychographic data. Available. So quickly giving you examples of data that's available for you, and I believe you guys saw some of these as Mark provided you guys ahead of time. But simple visitation data, um, ultimately understanding for any location of interest, how many total visitors came to that particular location? How many times they went to that particular location? Many times we look at events and we understand, we want to understand how many people went to that location. This is gonna help validate that that particular location's performing well. Or that event ultimately, maybe doesn't ultimately deserve to be continuing to have funding and support for future events as well. Understanding, of course, on any particular day, like we single out that event or that particular business. You know, what day was busiest? What was that particular visitation for that particular location? We can single that out and give you that exact total visitation for that location. Where are your visitors coming from with validation? So really understanding, are they coming just locally? And if they're coming from outside locally to our tourists or travelers, you know, where exactly are they coming from? So tying this into your marketing as well with validation. Ultimately, you know, are they coming locally from a perspective like real close? And again, are the, what are the sweet spots? Looks like one to two miles out. Again, we're looking at the Tim Osman Sports Complex. I should have mentioned that at the top, I'm sorry. Demographics of your visitors. So, putting it down, we can highlight ultimately, like I said, multiple different demographic data sets. This is given an example of census. But simply breaking down the demographics of any of your locations, any of your events. This breaking down, of course, income, education, age, ethnicity and your household size. So for that particular timeframe that they're going to that event, it's nice to understand too. You know, what time are they busiest for that particular area, that particular business downtown? What days of the week are they busiest? And when they are going, how long are they staying at that particular location as well? And this last slide ultimately is again, giving you that example of the retail recruitment component. So also understanding and helping you understand what businesses ultimately would be best to recruit. Us giving you that, that different types of demographic data and layering it on top of all the different available data we have available. Is how we can come to these conclusions of giving you options of which are your best fit options to choose from. Again, this is a really abbreviated version of what we provide you. But ultimately, with that being said, you would have all the above on a platform available and access as a village. Um, we have given you a pricing of twelve thousand, discounted down from fifteen thousand here at the year end. And this kind of breaks down the type of data that you are going to be having access to, but ultimately on our platform, everything that's available to you will be available unlimited. And these are examples of those data sets in addition to your census that you'd have access to as well. And this is just to leave, to leave you with before we get into specific, any questions. This kind of gives you again, additional, um, breakdown of each of these specific use cases and how they're relevant and how you can ultimately apply them to your village. So for the sake of time, I think we did a good job. Hopefully my internet worked well for you all. I'd like to leave this open for any questions.
Sure, um, is there anything you want to add before questions?
No, I mean, I can answer questions on the village.
Sure. Okay, alright, uh, questions on this side? Forward about this.
I think I, I'm gonna wait.
Okay. Trustee Bluthart?
No questions at this time.
Trustee McNeil?
I guess one question I have is, um, with the data, would it be the village's responsibility to kind of take that and make it into something presentable to approach a retailer with? Or does this somehow generate like a nice prepackage? Or is it just like?
Yeah, so, so they, we have the ability to report throughout the, right? So if a specific business asks us, hey, I'm curious, I'm a Pete's Place in town. How many Pete's Places do you have? Where, you know, what places that are ordering us are doing, you know, numbers? And so we have ways to show analytics for our businesses, also to look at future businesses that we want to bring into town. Um, the way this really works for the most part is by using geofencing, right? So, um, I, I can look, I can put a geofence around Antioch Pizza and know where their, where their business is coming from. We can look at other places that are neighboring communities and see, are we losing, you know, residents to other towns to go to this restaurant because we don't offer one here, right? So it's gonna give us a lot of analytics on, for sure, on business part of it, right? Knowing where our, our trade market is, where our people are going to because we don't offer that. Um, where are they coming to? Because we offer something specifically that other areas don't, right? So there's a lot of the business side of it. I see a huge benefit is, or to us, um, as well as, you know, on park utilization, right? Being able to geofence every single park in town and see what numbers those parks are doing on a regular basis when we have the event in town. Um, the reason we used the Tim Osman as a demo was I wanted to see, we had the laser light show last year. Where are people coming from, right? So that big spike, that was, we had just under six thousand people that came into Osman Park at that day. So I can quantify those numbers. I can also see on that day where those people were traveling from to come to that event, right? So it's gonna help, when we have events, it's gonna help when we utilize our parks. There's a lot of different metrics that right now, we're simply guessing. We've been guessing for years on what parks are, are the most utilized or what parks are underutilized and, or events or anything like that. So, um, looking at Rodney Atkins sponsor last year, where are we drawing people in from? So we can start to really close in that gap of where are we losing people to or where are we gaining people from? Well, that's kind of what I wanted to be able to use as.
Sure, I was gonna ask if it would be beneficial for like the Rodney Atkins and pretty accurate.
Yeah.
Okay, and then have you spoken at all like to Fox Lake, for example? Have they had any?
I have.
Pros, cons with this?
So Fox Lake does something that's, um, really unique. So they actually really promote this to their businesses, right? So this is a tool that if you're a business in Fox Lake and you have questions about your business, they have the ability to share this information, right? So they're utilizing it on a marketing, on as an, not even incentive, but really a way to attract business. And really to help the businesses that are there better understand their business. So we become a resource to those businesses. Um, Art from Antioch Pizza reached out and said, hey, look, I'm looking at the software. We had already been kind of looking at internally. Um, and he said, there's a lot of information I would love to see. And so, you know, we can provide that information and be a resource that we right now, I couldn't give them those numbers or those metrics, so.
And if the board moved forward with that, this would be like a one-year contract, kind of up for reconsideration.
Yep.
For some reason, it wasn't helpful. It turned out not to be.
Hundred percent. So it's a twelve year, or a twelve-month commitment. Um, it's based when we budgeted, it's based per month, right? So, um, theoretically, if this started on January one, you know, it would be in the first four months on this budget cycle, then the next remainder would go towards the next budget cycle, so. It's allocated monthly, it's monthly subscription.
That was it, thank you.
Trustee Pierce?
So I, I'm just trying to understand this because be, back in the good old days when I walked to and from school in the snow, uh, uphill both ways, um, I think we had S.D. Friedman who would come in and do stu- market studies. And they would, I think it happened like almost every ten years, they'd do a market study.
Yep.
And they tell us what our, our whole marketplace was and how, how big a circle around Antioch that we were getting businesses and what businesses we should look for. Um, so this is more of a real-time.
Correct. So we, I have a report from two thousand sixteen, we worked with called Retail Solutions.
Uh-huh.
It was an eight thousand dollar report that we did from the village and it's a one-time snapshot. So that's gonna tell us exactly at that day where we were at. I can look at this in, on a daily basis, on a monthly basis, on a weekly basis, whatever that, you know, when we have special events, we can look back at that. And also, they have information that they've already stored up until two thousand, or back to two thousand seventeen. So we have access to those information back in two thousand seventeen going forward as well.
So when you're saying, uh, geofencing, what you're really saying is they're data mining everybody's phone in town?
Correct.
All the businesses in towns, uh, transactions over, over through Experian or whoever, they're, they're data mining, um.
Not through business, the business transaction. It's, it's the IP of the phone essentially tracking where that phone was, was at.
Correct, but they, they don't know what that mon- that phone's spending money on. So if they're gonna be finding who's spending money, they gotta be tracking credit card transactions, maybe not personal information, but saying, oh, this business had thirty, thirty, uh, Visa transactions today. Um, look, they have an event here, the business now had two hundred credit card transactions. I mean, to me, that's data mining and you just need to be aware of.
That, that would be.
Are they still there?
We have not, we, we do not have any, uh, financial data whatsoever. We do not report on actual transactions.
You don't report on actual transactions? You, so you just report on numbers of people and, and how they compare to the census and what their phone says that they're here?
Pretty much, yeah. Yeah, so it's lat- latitude and longitude of, of the phone where it is. If it dwells inside a geofence that we draw for longer than seven minutes, we count it as a visit. Uh, then we extrapolate out visitation, uh, statistically based on the habits of other phones that are like, you know.
Jeremy, can you speak up just a little bit?
Uh, yeah, I think it's, let me, let me switch to a different microphone. Is that better? Is that better?
A little bit louder, if possible.
Okay, let me try to lean forward. Is that better?
Sure.
Okay. Um, so, yeah, so it's based on the latitude and longitude of the device. We use the latitude and longitude of when it's at rest at night to call it a home address. We, we, we place that within the census block and attribute the demographics of that census block to that latitude longitude. And then we use the latitude of longitude of when it arrives inside a geofence that stays longer than seven minutes, we call that a visit.
So how did you, uh, in your presentation, you said you, you, uh, partner with bigger businesses like Best Buy and Target and Walmart and stuff?
Yep.
How do you, what type partnership do you? How do you, what type partnership do you do with them?
So they're not as, so they all have cameras and receipts, they know who comes to their stores on a day-to-day basis. What they're interested in is where else people go, what grocery stores are super interested in, what other grocery stores people go to. Home Depot, as you can imagine, is very interested in who else went to Lowe's or Tractor Supply in the same trip. Um, your local businesses, because we already work with um the Targets and Walmarts of the world. As Mark was saying, your local business will be super interested in people that go to the box stores that they're competing against. And then we can take the demographics of the people that come to the area of your local businesses and say, this is their um, these are their their tastes. And you might want to stock the shelves accordingly, it's competitive analysis they hadn't had before.
So you're not really, you're not really doing a real-time uh analysis of our local businesses. You're doing a real-time analysis of the the phone usage in the village and comparing that to census data and statistical averages for people?
Well, sort of, but it the it's the arrival point is can be literally anywhere that we draw a box. So that could be a local business, it could be a downtown center, it could be a parking lot, it could be where you have the Taste of Summer event that we talked about earlier. Could be any of those things.
Yes, so we're creating essentially that geo fence, right? So we're creating it and saying this area that I'm curious to see who went in that area at what time.
So we're we're just paying them to track our phones and tell everybody where we're at.
Yep. Well, we're using an IP address build to to navigate where that person goes on a on a either a a trend or yes.
Okay, thank you.
It 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 uses also the same technology within your.
I I get the, I get the idea, I just, I think we need to be clear on it so everybody knows what we're doing.
Trustee Mason?
I understand geo fencing. I would want to see that contract because all of a sudden. I drive by Barb's Massage Parlor and all of a sudden I get. That showing up on my Google or my phone, all of a sudden I'm getting ads. From Antioch because it's geo fencing, all of a sudden I get stupid text messages because it's geo fencing. Because they went one step farther, they invaded my IP address. Because now that IP address is now owned because I went and Barb's. But you went, you went somewhere and all of a sudden, where, I didn't go there, I didn't go there. Uh uh or or you're getting all kinds of Google ads. Because now you guys own an IP address. And uh and I don't think the people of Antioch, my opinion, are gonna want their phone tracked. That's just, I get the data, I get what you guys are trying to do, I get it, one hundred percent get it. I just think it's a bad idea because it's got a potential to be abused.
Point of, point of clarification, sir?
Hold on, I'm still talking.
Okay.
I went to one rally and I can't stop getting stupid text messages three years later. Because they 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 attacked my IP address on my phone. So it's got a potential of whoever. And then the problem is if I'm going into my buddy's place and my other buddy knows it, or however this data sharing is going to be. Well, how come this guy's been over here so many times? And then it gets to be a jealousy thing and then it becomes, hey, I'm gonna buy more marketing. The, you know, instead of making your food better, it's just you're gonna throw more advertising dollars. I get what you're doing, I just don't think the people of Antioch are are gonna want it to be chips in the arms and tracked. I just don't, I just don't understand it.
So just to clarify in that there is no personal information, so it doesn't say.
Yes.
That Ed Masick went.
No, but 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 it's got a potential and I haven't seen the contract. It's got a potential geo fencing, all of a sudden I could start getting stinking text messages.
No.
That that opens a door, my IP address has been stolen.
No, no, so we have nothing to, sorry, we have nothing.
But I haven't seen the agreement, you say that, but then I haven't seen your agreement.
And another thing that we do have to contend when when we talk to folks like this, this isn't an opt-in or opt-out for Antioch. Like the the data exists in the ether no matter what. So there isn't like if you don't sign this contract, the people of Antioch's phone information isn't being shared in this way. It is either way, right? So it's not an opt-in and off, Target and Walmart and all those folks, like the 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 information exists in the ether. Cause all it is is the GPS from the cell phone.
I get that, but the Target knows exactly, then all of a sudden you can start getting sales ads, especially Coles is the worst.
Right, but that comes from their wifi inside the building.
Exactly where you are in that store.
Right, that comes from their wifi inside the building. Trustee Peterson?
It seems to be that no matter where you go, I could go to Gurnee Mills tomorrow and that's gonna happen to my phone. Um, I could go to a a larger mall. The one in Vernon Hills or Northbrook. And by the time I get into that mall and see the. The screens scrolling in front of me, that that has already read my phone and read what I Googled. And now the ad is right in front of me, showing me where I can go get it. It happens, it's gonna happen everywhere, it is happening everywhere. It's not an invasion as much as it's technologies going forward. And we should probably think about going with it.
Go around again, I could say Barry Manilow right now in five minutes on Facebook, I'll see a picture of Barry Manilow, so it's like. We'll see, I'll test it by the end, I'll test it by the end of the meeting, I'll show you the ad of Barry Manilow by the time we're done. Alright, okay, uh, Trustee Berman?
Okay, so for the laser light show, um, it's Osman Park, so was that? Because I did notice it and I I want to make sure that I'm I'm thinking of the right thing here. So was that the green that was going around the entire park that night?
No, they, so we don't have, we do not have any type of agreement with them right now. What I'm saying is that the information that was mined that day, even though we're not partners, is already out there, right? So it's all they have to do is they can look on phone data and they can basically pick a specific spot in time. Back then, they could pick, they could pick a date in two thousand eighteen and see where the phones were at. So this is not, we don't have an agreement right now, so I'm just saying that information without any type of contract, they already have the ability to pull that data. There was nothing onsite, they was, they were there just doing a light show that had nothing to do with these guys. Correct, no, I didn't ask them beforehand to come out or do anything like that, they were not, they were not in onsite.
Okay, I guess I'm not understanding this one because I thought that they said during the presentation that.
We use the analytics, yes, absolutely, but what I'm saying is that it's not a, there's no device that sits in downtown Antioch that's gonna read everybody's phones. It's already, when you drive down the road right now, your cell phone data, if you have any type of app on your phone, if you have the weather app, you agree when you sign up for the weather app? That is going to know your your location, right?
Right.
So that information is out there regardless of whether you, once you accept that app on your phone, that information is utilized. Again, it's not personal information, it's just where that phone is at that time.
Correct.
But normally each app asks you that. After you download it, it's not just you download it and then you automatically get permission by downloading it, you have to.
Opt-in or opt-out, yes, absolutely.
So what I'm, what I, I don't know, I guess maybe I'm not asking this correctly. So did this company? Use a geo fence want for that particular event?
So after the date of the event was already over and we had been talking to them, I said, I'm looking at a date at this in at this park. That happened on September twenty or September nine, could you tell me what the analytics look like for that date? The answer was yes, so then they pulled that data and that's when they provided me with that report.
Okay.
So we don't, we are, again, we are not utilizing the software right now, but the fact is is that it's already out there, it's already there. And it's just essentially collecting that data that's already essentially capturing.
It's crazy, alright, um.
Yeah.
Trustee.
Yeah, I I I just don't want to oversimplify it, but this data is being collected as we're sitting here. And we're not signed up for it, all we're doing is by, if we subscribe to this service, is having access to the data that's already there. That's been sitting out there and we go back any date or time and pick an area, uh uh your term geo fence. But pick a specific area and say, who was in this area and they have that information already.
Right.
So it's, we're, we don't need, we're not putting any new software, asking residents to do anything, we're not asking anybody to do anything other than. This just provides us access.
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Got it. No, I just wanted to make one thing too, so for the, you know, for the uh restaurants or for the malls, all that stuff, right? Geo fencing has been utilized for years already, right? So when you're getting close to Menards and you pull into that geo fence, it's going to do a push notification to your phone and say eleven percent's back on at Menards, right? That's because you entered that space, they're paying for that service, Menards is, right? They want to capture the information just like anybody else does. So again, they're not having their people sign up for anything special, but they entered into that geo fence. So once they do that, that that information becomes available and that's why that push notification goes out since here's the sale today.
Trustee Pierce?
I just wanted to identify what we were actually contemplating doing because I I'm gonna give my basic internet security speech right now. Unless you're Ted Kaczynski who has now passed away, um, living in a cabin up in the woods. Everybody knows everything there is to absolutely know about you, whether you want to know it or not. If you go to the post office, they know you went to the post office. Uh, Mark Zuckerberg is sucking the life out of you, Google sucking the life out of you on on information. So everybody, no matter where you are, no matter what security you keep, everybody knows who you are and what you're doing. And there, you can't prevent it anymore. Your cars report to the police everything you did before you had an accident, so that the police can prosecute you even more than they did before. Um, you know, you, your refrigerators at home are telling everybody what you're eating. If you're buying a new refrigerator, you you can't avoid this anymore, we just need to be aware of it, that that's what I was trying to get to.
Sure.
There is no more internet security because some stupid numbskull living in a basement in the Philippines decides he wanted to know everything about people in Antioch. That's it.
Any other questions, comments? Otherwise, um, why don't we get the board the contract?
Yeah, I have.
And then um, put it on the ju- ju- January tenth meeting.
Is there, is there any other questions you'd like me to bring back?
Alright. Um, alrights, I lost my place here. Alright, so um, that should be it for the committee of the whole meeting, do I have a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting?
So move.
Wait.
In that motion, should we move the executive session to the the regular meeting because it's not on?
Yeah, we'll move the regular, yeah, we'll do exec- executive session at the after the regular meeting. That was one of the reasons I moved it.
Right.
Alright, um, alright, so I have like four motions, who who do we got here? Motion trustee Boothard, second trustee Berman, roll call please.
Yes.
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 Hi.
You're open.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries, we'll take a five-minute recess, let's reconvene at eight o'clock. Alright, I'm gonna call the meeting to order at eight oh three, late as usual, um. Roll call please.
Here.
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 Present.
Here.
Present.
Present, alright, mayoral reports, um, Merry Christmas, Happy New Years for the next meeting. And um, happy that the train horns are finally stopping, so that'll be uh, that'll be um, happening hopefully in the next week. Jeff, okay, um, you might hear a rogue horn or two, but it's not gonna be all night like it like it was, so. I'm glad that's passes, um consent agenda, we have two items, anyone request and we remove any of the items from the consent agenda. Alright, uh, not, I'll entertain a motion in a second. So moved, motion trustee Boothard, second trustee Berman, roll call please.
Yes.
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 Hi. Yes.
Yes.
Alright, next is consideration and approval of payments of accounts payable as prepared by staff in the amount of three million, seven thousand. Thousand one hundred eighty dollars and sixty-eight cents, do I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Motion trustee Peterson.
Second.
Second trustee McNeil, discussion regarding this item.
Can we just get a breakdown from Zeta on why it's?
The big ones.
Hope you don't mind me substituting for Zeta.
I was, I was really kind of disappointed.
About about half of it stems from TIF, TIF payments and debt service related to the water treatment plant. So we have one point six, almost one point seven funding those. Um, we had a nearly six hundred thousand dollar uh payment to Bowler moving towards the Open Space Project. Uh, of course, we have some engineering services related to the road program that was a was a significant number that was paid. Public Works had to make a rather significant emergency repair to one of their trucks to get it back in service. That pretty much captures most of the very large expenses that were seen on this.
As you're licking your finger and trying to get through all those pages, don't you, Zeta had jumped up instead of you?
I'm still old fashioned, I'm a kind of paper man.
Any other discussion regarding those items?
Great job.
Roll call please.
I, oh, person.
Yes.
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 I.
That's a great job, yeah.
Six voting, oh, sorry, I jumped.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Next item, um, consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing the acting village administrator to acquire for the public works department. Five Ford trucks from Sutton Ford for a total of two hundred forty thousand, seven hundred twenty-three dollars. Utilizing the Northwest Municipal Conference Suburban Purchasing Cooperative Resolution Number twenty-three dash eighty-two, do I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second trustee Peterson, second trustee uh Berman, um.
Oh, thanks.
Director Heimbro.
Thank you and good evening.
Um, I remember Jeff got like twelve last time he was up.
Yeah.
Six.
I think he got six, so I went one less. And uh, for this fiscal year, I originally didn't have five uh pickup trucks. Basically reserved for um, purchase, but I did have two dump trucks, uh pickup truck a van. Basically, I could not have paid those, um, especially the dump trucks. So I thought I could pivot a little bit and and order the pickup trucks that A, I was behind. And then what I wanted to capture in this coming year, especially because I won't get delivery most likely till summer or fall of uh twenty-four. Um, so that's the reason why there's a shift in uh, explained in here of what I was originally going to uh purchase and what I. And it's below the original amount that uh I had estimated for that original purchase.
Uh, questions, trustee Pierce?
Um, if you're purchasing five trucks, are you replacing five trucks or are we continuing the practice of driving them? So we had put sheet metal in the floorboards, those are road signs, yeah, road signs.
No, I am not necessarily adding to the fleet, it is replacement, I'm going to have to shift some. Basically looking to get rid of the absolute worst and shift some vehicles around. We have, we still have older vehicles with high mileage, but um, I'm going to utilize uh one truck. For instance, uh, give it to the treatment plant, they're still driving a Crown V, so. I'm trying to.
Give that back to J- uh, our temporary trader so that he has a car.
So uh I will be, there will be an auction with uh multiple vehicles on.
Alright, okay, thank you.
Thank you, um, in that regard, uh, we remember to talk about um, vehicle replacement fund. We talked about this six months, a year ago and kind of using that money and keeping it in a kitty for that stuff, okay? Just what we're talking about, any other questions about? Alright, um. Roll call please.
Yes.
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 Hi.
Yes.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Um, next item number five is consideration and approval of ordinance designated nine seventy-seven Main Street. As an individual historic landmark, ordinance number twenty-three dash twelve dash thirty-six, have a motion and a second waving the second reading.
So move, waving the second reading.
Okay, we have a uh motion trustee Peterson, second trustee Masick, I have director Yurigan to discuss this item.
Yes, thank you, your honor, um, this matter comes before the village board this evening for the village's first individual landmark. Um, this matter went before the um Historic Preservation Commission, a a number of the members are actually here this evening. I went before the uh Historic Preservation Commission, uh, week ago, uh, for the first individual landmark. As you will know, a number of years, years ago, we passed the village's Historic Preservation Ordinance. And we have been very, working very closely with the Historic Preservation Commission, completing our survey. And our first landmark is nine seventy-seven Main Street. Uh, what is, I think, really interesting about this building and why it's so inherently historically significant is this is the oldest building in Antioch. The oldest existing building, the meeting house on Main Street, um, obviously. Um, obviously, the Historical Society, um, purchased this building back in two thousand and it really did complete a beautiful job restoring it to its original historic appearance. The building itself, as my staff report summarizes, goes back to eighteen sixty-three. It was constructed by the disciples of Christ who actually designate the village's name, Antioch. They're the individual group, um, that actually, um, identified Antioch, named Antioch. So it's historical from that perspective. Is also historical, um, from the perspective of the fact that it was the home of Saint Ignatius Church from approximately, uh, eight, the eighteen seventies until they sold, sold the property. Um, and at that point, the Historical Society restored the property. Um, very briefly, there are three required findings of facts. Uh, findings that are required based on our devotions, historical preservation ordinance. And this is a very unique property because it basically met all three standards. You only need to meet one of those standards, uh, to become a, uh, his individual landmark. But this unique building met all three, uh, standards, not only for its history, not only for its integrity, but also just from architectural perspective. It's probably one of the best examples of a Greek revival buildings, uh, in any surrounding community around here. So, um, it was unanimous, Historic Preservation Commission made a unanimous recommendation that this building be designated as our first landmark. Hopefully it will, you know, we're hoping to have many, many future landmarks. As you all know, uh, we do require owner's consent. So the Historical Society are very happily, um, consented to making this our first individual landmark. And I think it's appropriate, um, that the oldest building in Antioch be designated as our first individual landmark. So with that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions or concerns on this item?
I just, I think it's great and I think it's important to preserve, you know, historical sites like this for future generations.
Agreed. Anyone else? Nope, no objections. Thank you, Historical Society. Um, on that note, I would entertain a roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Happily, yes.
All right, six voting yes, motion carries. Thank you. Um, as long as I'm not violating Robert's rules of orders here, I'm going to, um, uh, the next seven items, number six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven and twelve on the agenda are all related to the, uh, public hearing we had earlier regarding the levy of taxes for the village of Antioch, the tax as well as the TIF. Um, I will read each ordinance and the number. And then, um, hopefully I can entertain a, uh, motion, the second waving, the second reading on these. So first one is ordinance number twenty-three dash twelve dash thirty-seven. Ordinance number twenty-three dash twelve dash thirty-eight. Ordinance twenty-three dash twelve dash thirty-nine. Ordinance twenty-three dash twelve dash forty. Ordinance twenty-three dash twelve dash forty-one. Ordinance twenty-three dash twelve dash forty-two. And ordinance twenty-three dash twelve dash forty-three. To have a motion and a second waving, the second reading. To consolidate the items. Motion trustee Masek, second trustee Pierce. Waving the second reading.
I think trustee Masek needs to be clear on this motion and define.
All right. Roll call please.
Yes.
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 Hi.
Yes.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Um, next item is consideration. Oh, all right.
Yeah.
All right, now I need a motion, uh, have a motion and a second.
Yeah.
Maybe the second reading to approve items six through twelve.
Yes.
Motion trustee Pierce, second trustee Masek, roll call please.
Berman? Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Hi.
Masek?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Item number thirteen is consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing the acting village administrator to enter an agreement with Arthur J. Gallagher Risk Management Services to provide property casualty liability, workman's comp and related insurances to include employee health insurance, to not include employee health insurance in the amount not to exceed six hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars. I have resolution number twenty-three dash eighty-three. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Motion trustee Peterson.
Second.
Second trustee McNeil. And I know that, uh, the, um, discussion question trustee Pierce.
We had the emails going around from Ashley about cybersecurity was either going to be part of this, not going to be part of this. And I was curious to see what her slant on it was. And I was curious to see what trustee Masek's land on it was.
Point, point of order real quick. Didn't we just make a motion to approve the six hundred and seventy-one? Cause in the, in the agenda, it said, or not agenda, in our packet, it mentions we either have a motion at the six seventy-one or a motion at the six forty.
Regarding the site, the cyber.
Regarding the two options, but we just made.
Her motion is a six seventy-one, so if that's the night.
We're having that discussion first and then if we decide no.
That includes a cyber, correct?
Okay.
Yeah.
Six seventy-one does, yes. So, um, as you know, obviously from what Gallagher presented, um, at the last meeting this year, the village is looking at an approximate twenty-six percent increase um, over last year's premium. So what you see is included in the quote, um, is an option for the additional two million dollar umbrella policy, which would bring the village up to a seven million dollar, um, as, as we were previously covered. But that would cost an additional twenty-five thousand, um, almost twenty-six thousand dollars in premiums. Um, the sec, there's also then the option of the standalone cyber policy. Um, we had originally received that was quoted out at about sixteen thousand dollars. And then they came back with another estimate and it dropped another three thousand dollars from there. Um, so now we're looking at the standalone cyber policy in the amount of thirteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars. So, um, the board has the option to approve, um, the insurance renewal with or without these add-on coverages included. So if the standalone, I want to make it very clear, if the standalone option, um, is not selected, then there, we will still have the same status flow cyber coverage that we've had in the past through Liberty Mutual under our general liability policy.
Well, the standalone, if it standalone is thirteen thousand, you said?
Correct.
Instead of sixteen thousand?
Um, no, so the standalone policy is more expensive than if we reverted back to having it covered under, they call it a cyber suite through Liberty Mutual. And that's under the general liability policy.
So, but this general liability would be, if we took everything with Liberty Mutual and Gallagher and stuff, how much would that be?
So with, so the cost for Liberty Mutual then, um, that renewal option, bottom line comes out to seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars would be the estimated cost.
Not, I mean, for the whole thing. A whole kit and caboodle.
With us for.
All, all Gallagher, all, not.
If we did both of the add-on policies with the excess liability with the umbrella coverage and the standalone policy, you're saying that would be the six seventy-one amount.
Okay. But if we did the standalone.
Then that would be.
I'm confused here because you're saying standalone policy, but one, one comes with the one we're going to approve. You know, we don't approve with that, then we have to approve the standalone.
Right, so that's what I'm seeking is so the board's direction in terms of which option. If you're interested in the broader coverage with the standalone policy, that's an option with the additional excess liability umbrella. Um, or the other option is to revert to what we currently have, right? With our cyber, um, suite that's under the general liability. And so if you were looking at, um, if you weren't considering those additional add-on options, then that bottom line would come out to six hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and five dollars.
And the email you sent us, the, the standalone had a list like this long of stuff covered. And the general policy only covered like this much. That's why I wanted your trustee Masek's land. Cause he's always been the main whiner about this. I mean, he's been the main input on this.
Or information specialist.
So the standalone is going to give broader coverage here in simple in today's age. The other, I did email. Cal? Cal, I did e, also email. And he doesn't know how to respond to a question on email. He tried calling me today. I wish I didn't answer the phone call. So I asked him also for a gap policy on the wind hail deductibles. And he did not get, he called me and I didn't get a chance to give him a call back. So I asked him for an option for the wind hail. I can get that on other programs. When we got such a large gap on wind hail, their wind hail deductible, we had a tornado come through. Almost have a two million dollar loss on, on building coverage. So I asked them, get us a gap, some gap coverage policy on that. It's out there, you just have to look. So we didn't get us, you didn't get a price on that. So I asked him to get that, if we can get that price too. So we get a gap, that, that'd be a secondary policy on that. Pick up our gap coverage on our.
When you say secondary, that's another standalone policy?
That'd be another standalone policy for gap coverage, right?
So is it your recommendation that we approve the lower amount of six forty and then look at those additional standalone policies?
Policy for, for cyber. Cause there's been such an active cyber problem. Cyber's good. Cyber's needed today's age. So I, I, I was, I would take standalone cyber. And then future, if he can figure it out, we may have to look at, looking at purchasing that gap coverage in case we have a huge windstorm. At a hundred thousand dollars for building loss, if we did have a major windstorm come through that side. Huge, huge situation for wind hail, a hundred thousand foot over. And, and I know he's writing that just from my homeowner's policy on the, the gap policy. Cause a, a company tried to take my business away from who had it. And they're like, oh, here's this great price. And I started talking to him, I'm like, what do you mean? Six thousand dollar deductible on the wind, wind, wind and hail damage? My current policy is two fifty, two hundred and fifty dollars. And, and, but they're like, but look at the pricing. We definitely helped me. But we typically sell that on like big condo association where they have a five percent deductible. And so if you had five million dollars in buildings, that's a huge deductible. So then you buy a secondary policy. If it's wanted, because now that everybody puts loss assessment on their policy. So then you can buy that gap cover. So it's either, then either or.
Trustee Masek on page three sixty-nine of our packet. As our resident, um, expert on this topic, are you suggesting that we would choose option one or option two? I think you're saying choose option two and then look at the, and then look at the, okay. So.
Yeah, the broader form coverage on the cyber.
Why don't we call a vote on the current, what?
Seventy-one. Right, option one is the broad.
Option one is the broader cyber?
There, there's a lot of confusion. I need to clarify some before you go. Right now, the, we're discussing option one on a vote for yes or no on option one.
Correct.
And what I'm hearing is, is we need that cyber policy, which is not included in option one.
Right? No, that's in, that's included, but yeah.
Not the standalone one that she's recommending. There's so many issues that are being quoted around. So we're at six seventy-one if we just take the policies as submitted that we have in our packet and so forth.
That's with everything.
That's with everything that Gallagher was selling.
That would be the maximum amount of coverage.
And that's with these two thousand dollar or two million dollar extra.
Correct.
And everything else. So I guess, so the, I guess the first question is, do we need that extra two million dollars? Is that? Cause without that, then we're down to the six forty, correct?
Right, so the way that it's written in your packet would be the, the first option, right? The first motion that's, um, in the packet would be for everything included. That, that would include the cy, the cyber standalone policy as well as the umbrella coverage. Um, the second option would be if the board decides to forego both of those coverages, um, then that would be the lesser amount.
So the six seventy-one includes that as standalone cyber policy and the twenty, the extra two million dollars. Gotcha, okay, that's where I was.
Okay. So I, back to my other question. So trustee Masek, you're act, I misspoke. You're actually would recommend the first option, six seventy-one. Okay. All right.
Well, I'm not recommending.
Well. Yeah. You're saying that, 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 that gives us the best coverage at this, at this point in time.
And then what he was referring to, what trustee Masek was referring to is additional coverage on top of this that we're looking into or asking for information.
Correct.
Okay.
And then the gap coverage on the wind hails, who's Cal? During my question in email.
Since we have, and, and since we have Cal.
Cal there?
And.
Yep.
Did you ever get a question on the wind hail gap coverage? Were you able to find anything?
Um, yes, I did. Let me pull this up real quick, apologies. So we did go back to Liberty Mutual to look for the gap coverage or also known as a wind hail deductible buy down program. Um, unfortunately Liberty Mutual has no, uh, programs in place to offer that gap coverage. Um, so we had to go to some alternative markets for that. Um, the first market that we approached, uh, is Amwins, one of our most, uh, kind of reliable wind hail deductible buy down program carrier out there. Um, we do have two options on the table for a wind hail gap coverage per se. Um, option one, um, is, excuse me, let me look at this. Um, a hundred thousand per location, um, and twenty-five thousand per location, subject to a maximum of three million per occurrence. That has a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible per occurrence on the gap coverage. Um, but that premium comes out to three hundred thousand dollars. Option two is similar, um, you know, a hundred thousand per location, um, twenty-five thousand per occurrence. And that has a maximum of five million dollars per occurrence. Same deductible of twenty-five thousand, that premium is five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, you know, so looking at this, the way we look at it, currently sitting at a hundred thousand dollar deductible for wind hail per occurrence. Um, so if we have, you know, ten buildings, get a, um, you know, wind hail, uh, loss, that's, you know, one million dollars, uh, right there for the wind hail. Um, looking at this differently, um, you know, we're seeing that option one is, you know, three million dollar limit per occurrence um, with the twenty-five thousand dollar deductible. However, that's three hundred thousand dollars. Um, so it's, it's kind of up to the city's discretion, uh, the level of comfortability with taking on this additional, you know, three hundred to five hundred thousand dollars, um, for a wind hail buy down.
Cal, I have a question for you. This is the mayor. Um, when did we get these quotes back for this insurance policy that we're talking about tonight?
Um, let me look. I want to say we got these back last Thursday. However, they're not formal quotes, they are formal indications, so a little, a little different.
So, I mean, I just, I feel like some of this information is coming to us like at the eleventh hour with very little time to, uh, discuss or shop around for this stuff. I also had a question on the fee of, um, thirty-eight thousand dollars on the, um, fee that's going to you guys as a broker. Are you taking a fee and also charging a commission, getting a commission from Liberty Mutual? So are you getting paid from us and paid from them?
No, no, we, we take a flat fee for the city. Um, there are some built-in commissions on the ancillary, ancillary lines such as cyber. Um, I apologize, don't have the fee scheduled up in front of me. Um, but no, no, we're not, we're, we're taking a flat fee and then just on the like cyber lines. Um, there's a built-in commission that's net of the premium.
Your, your, when does our current, uh, policy expire? When does this?
December, yeah, December thirty, this is it.
This is it?
Yeah.
Um, and just to address the commission fee for the cyber policy, I have that in front of me and, uh, in the packet to, on eighty-three of their proposal, but that would be fourteen, fourteen and a half percent.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
The commission structure for the cyber liability policy is set at fourteen and a half percent. That's the percentage included here.
All right, um, any other discussion or questions?
Except for the fact, I feel like my feet are on the frying pan, walking across hot coals. And we don't have another meeting this year to. Normally I, at this point, I'd say either table this or, or vote no on this, look for a different broker. Um, because I, I, I don't think we're getting fair pricing, especially when it comes to this gap, gap issue that trustee Masek brought up, because that is a real issue. So, um, this concerns me a lot and I don't know what to do because, as you say, December thirtieth. And what other broker's going to put together quotes for us by December thirtieth?
Well, can I?
Is there a termination point?
Is there a termination point? Can we early terminate this if we need to? Or are we, are we committed for the whole year? And that'd be to the young guy.
Oh, sorry, that, that would be a one-year, uh, contract.
Okay, so there is no early termination.
But, uh, this is, uh, Miles Shepp at Gallagher. Uh, I'd like to just make a few comments. Um, based on, uh, some of the commentary that I just heard. Uh, two things, one, on the windstorm buy down coverage, the indication of three hundred thousand. You will find that in this very difficult marketplace. Um, that is a, first of all, it's a very high number, but it's going at market rate. So when you talk about, uh, you know, other brokers, what we've done is we actually went into the secondary market to find this gap coverage or this buy down coverage. And the pipe, the pricing, this indication of three hundred thousand, which is astronomical, uh, is the reality of the marketplace today. So, I mean, you could table that, uh, discussion. We can always pursue it and firm up those quotes. And we can easily and readily go into January. But the, uh, concern that we have as well is that hundred thousand dollar per. Building windstorm deductible that could readily add up. So. It's something that needs to be addressed. It needs to be funded for if, uh, cause it's truly a self-insurance piece when you have a convective storm. And if you've noticed the recent in the Midwest, we've had some terrible convective storms this past weekend down in Kentucky. That storm was a twelve hundred mile stretch that devastated several towns. So. It, it is a very, uh, serious, uh, uh, coverage. Uh, to where the pricing of it is what it is, given, uh, the marketplace today and Mother Nature. Uh, playing havoc in the Midwest. The, the second question, a mayor that you raised was the Gallagher fee, uh, to be competitive. And I could tell you that on a fee basis, first of all, we're fully transparent and our fee is extremely, uh, reasonable. If you look at your premium of six hundred and seventy-one thousand. If we were at full commission and not on a fee, our remuneration would be about a hundred thousand dollars. And as you can tell, we're at the hu- the forty thousand dollar mark, which is extremely competitive. Um, and, and advantageous to the village to be on a fee. And we're proud to serve the village, uh, as your broker for both property and casualty. So. It, this is what we do day in and day out, uh, in servicing municipalities. And if you look at your program year over year, because of the increase, there's a lot of factors that go into that. And we scour the marketplace, not only on the buy down, but also on the property and liability. And the program that we have presented, we feel is very competitive, given the circumstances and the account profile.
Yeah, and so I, I appreciate that. Um, I'll, I'll just say, um, in response to that, you know, I've only been doing this. Two years or two plus years and, um, I understand I own a business that insurance has increased. And I did poll some of my colleagues about, you know, when they receive their quotes, the amounts of the quotes, you know, most went up ten, fifteen percent. I didn't obviously compare loss runs, but I also, um, learned from most of them that they're part of municipal insurance pools where. Um, that reduces the rates. So I wondered why, um, we're not, you know, more involved in a pool. To correct those, um, rates.
I was around when we switch, shift over to Gallagher and we were IRML before. And. IRML, whatever you, whatever it is, the, the state won and, and it was through the ceiling. I mean, this is.
It was a million dollars.
It was, it was probably half.
Premium?
Yeah, it was about half. This is about half of what we're paying before we transferred over to Gallagher. So I get that. Uh, my concern is, was this, has this gap been there all along?
No, no, this, this gap.
I'll help, I'll help some of these guys. The problem with the insurance is the reinsurers. They raise their rates for the insurance companies. So I get the wind hail rate is skyrocket. Most of the, it's the. The insurance companies that you never heard their names, they raise their rates. That the insurance company have to pay for the large. premiums. So, uh, you know, most of the insurance companies with the last year's storm claims, they hit their deduct. So that means like insurance company has a storm claim. Whatever that, that is for the day, hundred and fifty million dollars, the other company pick up for that day claim. And there's companies that lost. I don't want to mention names, but big companies tw- in the, over twenty billion dollars last year. So the reinsurers came in, reinsurers now are raising rates, insurance companies are raising rates because of the reinsurers. So that's part of the issue when rates go up, especially homes. And that's why you're seeing all these percentage deductibles come on. You're seeing roof restrictions come up. You're seeing unique ways of trying to lower premiums by putting more on the person. From the insurance company, you're seeing all risk coverage going away. You're seeing it going to broad form or name peril coverage. Versus all risk coverage. So you're seeing the industry changing to try to keep premiums down and affordable. And put more on the person or the business, which is, which is unique. In my forty years of being in the business. So it's, it's, it's a different world that we're in right now with, whether you want to call it global changing or. Different weather patterns or whatever you want to call it. It's unique and, and doesn't look like it's getting better. It's, it's just, we're gonna have to make a, a, the government's gonna have to make some special. Spending saves account just for people doing roof replacements. Cause it was, it's not gonna be the same as. People getting hail, they're gonna get their full roof, they're gonna get whatever that depreciated roof value is moving forward. It's gonna, it's a new, unique industry. Sounds like healthcare. It's, it's getting, it's getting, it's getting bad. And you got companies now, when they bring their car in, they're getting half, maybe some of the companies are, are fighting to get that car fixed. So it's, it's unique.
All right, well, um, we can discuss this ad nauseam, but I think, uh, you know what we have to do here. So. Yep, so, um, let's call any other additional insurance after this. We can discuss, uh, keep looking at, but. Um, let's call a roll call on this item, uh, with the motion on the table is for, uh, option A for the six hundred and seventy-one thousand and change. Um, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Hi.
Yes.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Thank you guys for being online. Um. Ashley, is this you again? Oh, uh, there's really, okay, well, this should be quick. Next is, uh, consideration approval of an ordinance regarding the Illinois Paid Leave. For all workers act for the village of Antioch, Lake County, Illinois. Ordinance number twenty-three dash twelve dash forty-four. Do I have a motion and a second waving, second reading?
So move waving the second reading.
Trustee Bluthart, second trustee McNeil, any discussion on this state law? All right, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Hi.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, uh, six voting yes, motion carries. Next is consideration and approval of a resolution regarding. The release and non-release of certain minutes of executive session. Resolution number twenty-three dash eighty-four. Do I have a motion in a second?
So move.
Motion trustee Pierce.
Second.
Second trustee Berman, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Hi.
Yes.
Yes.
Six voting, uh, yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing. The execution of a temporary employment agreement between the village of Antioch and Jeffrey Gutcho. Uh, resolution number twenty-three dash eighty-five. Do I have a motion in a second?
So move. Second.
So, um, motion trustee McNeil, second trustee Berman. Um, any discussion on this other? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Hi.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion, six voting yes, motion carries. All right, uh, last item is consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing a change order. Associated with open space development at Main Street and Orchard Street. We really gotta get a name for that place. Related to the cafe facility, design changes in the amount of thirty thousand, seven seventy-nine, thirty-eight. Uh, resolution number twenty-three dash eighty-six, do I have a motion in a second?
They'll move.
Motion trustee McNeil.
What, what was the changes here?
This, this is the, uh, this is the nano wall plus the security swipe cards for the three thousand. So it's memorializing the vote from earlier and adding, then he can explain it. Motionist, second trustee Bluthart. Director, Ibro, do you want to explain what this one's regarding?
Yes, so I know in previous board meetings there was discussion on the nano wall. And it was, it was, uh, discussed as a change order, but it was never finalized. This is actually finalizing. And authorizing the contractor to purchase it.
The nano wall, that's the.
The change in the window.
Change in window. Okay. And then you've got cyber strike plates or something?
Yeah, so, um, the building basically existed with all of the exterior was proposed with all the exterior doors to have. Uh, an electronic lock system. They had manual lock systems on the mechanical room. And they did that for the reason that they didn't think anybody was gonna be accessing it, but. Uh, public works maybe or, uh, cleaning company or cleaning staff. And after we looked at it, IT is in there. Um, if we do, uh, rent out the cafe area. That individual may want to put, um, some supplies in there. So there's gonna be multiple people that are gonna be accessing that mechanical room and this will allow us to not have a key that is handed out. Um, that could be lost or duplicated. It's going to basically complete the building with the rest of the electronic. It's only three thousand dollars.
And security and timestamps when people are going in and out of there. So it's not like someone just has a key.
Very similar to, I believe, what the PD has. Um, and then what, uh, what we have at Metra or to be installed also. So it can be monitored, it can be locked, it can be alarmed set. Key card associated with it, they'll know who is accessing it. With that key card or key fob.
And I think, um, Amy said she can remotely open it, lock it, uh, you know.
There's alarms. So this is adding just two of it, the rest of, the rest of the building.
Cameras.
Cameras that are going in the park.
Do you guys have any other questions about this item? So the first item was approved at an earlier board meeting. I broke the tie on that. That was a, um. This is just formalizing it in writing as part of the contract documents. The three thousand some odd dollars, a new item that came up as they were discussing how the building would function once we're in there.
Can we separate the items out on this?
Yeah.
Is it set releasing words?
Um. I believe it's submitted by Bowler as a change order with, with both of them, um.
Seventeen, where am I?
So would there be a specific, even though?
Yeah, because I voted no on the window in the first place. I don't want to vote on it again. I, I feel like I'm being tricked into voting for the window. I understand, I understand he's just doing one change order to catch it off.
Okay, I see what you're saying. All right, so, um.
Can't we just change the, 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 the motions here to?
Oh yeah, let's, let's, okay. So, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for, uh, um. Who, who had the motion?
Jimmy here says bifurcation.
You want to bifurcate the items on the change orders, are you saying? Yeah, you could, you could split the question. So we just make a motion to, and I'm just pulling up the change order.
There's a two A, which is the wall and two B, which is the door strike.
So we have, the, was, the motion was made for the full item.
Hmm.
All right, who made, I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Yeah.
Withdraw it. Would you withdraw it?
Yes.
All right, does, and mayor, do you? Yummies. Okay.
This is why you get paid big bucks.
Thank you, yes. Um, this is, Mr. Chair, can you see if anyone objects to the withdrawal of the motion?
Does anybody on this board object to trustee McNeil withdrawing her motion and bifurcating the question? All right, no objection. Trustee McNeil, would you make, um, if you want to, you can make a motion to approve the change order for the nano wall revisions. At cafe facility, which would be for the amount of twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighteen cents.
Do we need to spell all that out again? Or just, I'm just saying, I'm gonna make a motion, so move for the nano wall for the twenty-seven thousand. Okay.
Second.
Um, motion trustee McNeil, second trustee Bluthart. Um, roll call on item two A on the change order. Roll call, please.
So this is for the nano wall.
Okay.
This is for the window, door, nano wall, whatever they found today.
No.
Luther?
Yes.
Neil? Yes.
Here?
No.
No. Peterson?
Yes.
Yes, um, four voting yes, three voting no, motion carries. Next item is, uh, I have a motion for item two A, uh, for approval of the electronic door strikes.
To be.
Cafe facility.
To be.
To be.
Or not to be, that is.
Yes, yes. Um, so I have a motion.
Father's boat was named to be or not to be.
So motion trustee McNeil, second trustee Bluthart, uh, roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
No. Yes.
Here?
Yes.
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 Six voting yes, motion carries. Um, last item on the agenda is consideration and approval. Of a resolution authorizing the execution of a settlement agreement, resolution number twenty-three dash eighty-seven. Um, I would make a request that we move this item to executive session for discussion. On that, um, note, we will go through a couple of reports, um, administrator's report.
Your honors. If you're okay with your honor, I'd like to just address the, uh, administrator report and the PD report in one continuous.
All right, go for it.
All right. As the mayor mentioned, um, the FRI did issue their letter identifying that our area has been part of the reaffirmed quiet zone. Uh, the railroads have seven days to cease sounding their horns through the zone. And again. As it was pointed out, trained engineers do maintain discretion when they have safety concerns. So although we do expect. Nearly, uh, things to return to normal, there's always that one-off chance that you may hear a horn here and there. Um, I did reach out, um, the engineer in Buffalo Grove who kind of took this project on to confirm what the timelines associated with this will be. Uh, he said typically the quiet zones are reaffirmed for a period of three years. However, due to many of the, the changes and the engineering that were associated, he is not clear yet on how those timelines will be impacted, whether or not. The quiet zone, uh, reaffirmation will be a shorter period of time or a longer period of time. Um, appreciate the board's, uh, patience with me as I kind of integrate myself in this new role, learning a lot about building parks and. Uh, capital projects that I've never had to delve in before, um. The, the team has been fantastic in helping me, uh, become a little bit more familiar with those things. Um, just as the board is aware, we did get a new, um, project manager through Bowler, the original project manager left. To take another, another role with a different company and Mueller was very responsive in getting another project manager on board to fill that role. Um, there's been a lot of discussion over the clarifier. Uh, Dennis is working to finalize that final pay. Application through J.J. Henderson. Uh, he has done a fantastic job. Uh, working to mitigate some of the costs that were associated with the added engineering fees that we incurred. As a result of the concrete not meeting our bid specs, so we don't anticipate to incur a lot of out of pocket expenses. As a result of that added, uh, engineering. Uh, from a budgeting perspective, staff is being on work on next year's budgets. Uh, we're gonna work very hard to meet the. Timelines that are being established by director Torres to move this forward. Um, we hope to come to the board with our first budget presentation much earlier than last year, where we're gonna look for your feedback and input. On the operational budget for the village. Over the last several, uh, months, I've had some, some meetings with area stakeholders, uh, that are working to address homelessness within our area. Um, there's a lot of organizations from Palt County that recognize that there's a service gap in Western Lake County. For our homeless population and it's kind of a cool thing to see us come together and look for ways to fill this need and creative in new ways. Um, we are working with the county, particularly pads to see if there's some expanded opportunities for access. Right now, the library is being considered as, as kind of a hub for meetings and services to be, be, uh, brought to. Uh, holding one-on-one meetings with our department heads and our directors. Just to try to find out what our pinch points are from an operating perspective. So it's able me to kind of better evaluate. Where our operational efficiencies can have small tweaks and improvements. So once all those are completed, I'm, I plan to bring a, a brief summary to the board. Uh, to kind of highlight what we've, what we've identified as a team and ways that we can improve and expand our services that we're offering to our community. Uh, Jim Moran is working on a, on a kind of a cool new project. Uh, he's working on making holiday videos with village staff. Uh, kind of as a community engagement to put some names and faces and the different roles and different services that we provide to our community. Uh, he made his first one with some staff today. I will have him share that with you. Uh, we would very much appreciate if some members of the board would, would not mind participating in that project. Just sending a brief holiday message to our, our, uh, community. If you're interested, please reach out to Jim Moran and he will set up some time with you. If you're interested, please reach out to Jim Moran and he will set up some time with you. I'm hearing Jimmy being voluntold up there, it looks like. Uh, District Thirty-four IGA update. Um, I think we are very close, the District Thirty, for the SRO. Uh, they anticipate bringing the draft IGA to their board at this month's board meeting. So long as their board approves it, it will come back for your first look at the January board meeting. And we'll go from there. Uh, golf carts. So as you know, we just finished on December first with our first official season of golf carts. Uh, the permitted use of those ended first of this month. Trustee Bluthart had just asked me to highlight how that went for, for us from a village perspective and from a law enforcement perspective. So we issued a total of fifty-three golf cart permits this year. Um, I spoke to my staff. We experienced no reported traffic collisions as a result of the golf cart operations on our streets. I'm happy to say that there was no need to issue any citations for golf cart violations. Uh, there were a couple of warnings issued and there were a number of contacts had, uh, as we discussed earlier. Being a pilot, pilot year for this program, most of our enforcement was educational focused. Just helped the people come more familiar with what the requirements of operating a golf cart are. Uh, overall, there were some complaints received, but most of them ended up being what we would consider a non-enforceable complaint surrounding the issues that we talked about early on related to seatbelt usage, car seats and those type of things that the village as a non-home rural community does not have the authority to regulate. Uh, want the board to be aware that, uh, Friday, I'm going to be sworn in to the executive board of the Lake County Chiefs of Police Associations at their annual holiday, holiday gala. Um, it's the, the, the executive board represents police departments and their interests throughout Lake County. Uh, the PD recently passed its federal use of force certification review. This was a project that we first qualified for under, um, under an executive order shortly after I stepped into the role as chief back in twenty-twenty. The Illinois Association Chief for Police Law Enforcement Accreditation Program is the one that oversees and completes this review. And it's done under presidential executive order on safe police and policing for safe communities. Um, and these certifying credentials are required for us as a municipality and a police department to build a access, many discretionary federal grant funding opportunities. So I want to make the board aware, I'm going to be out of town from December twenty eighth to, um, January fourth. I'll be sure that the board and staff know who to contact about any issue, any issues that come up while out of town if they arise. And a reminder that shop with a cop is taking place next Tuesday, the nineteenth. We have two groups. Uh, we have a total of fifty kids. One is at four thirty, one is at six thirty, starting at Raymond Chevy. I would please invite you, if you've never taken the opportunity, come see what that's about. Uh, come, come see it. It's a pretty spectacular event. And then lastly, as we go through this transitional period, I just want to take a quick opportunity to acknowledge, uh, the fantastic staff that this village has working for it. Uh, as a board, it's important to know that you really do have some great people that are working very hard to serve our residents. And without them, I don't think, uh, this would be going as smoothly for me as it is. So I just, I'd like to give a big shout out for them for all their help during this transition process. With that, unless there's any questions, I'll conclude my report.
Any questions? Trustee Bluthart?
Um, in regards to the golf carts, when do we start re-registering for next year? Is there a plan? And I'm, as I recall, the carts have to be re-inspected every year, correct?
I'd have to double check the ordinance. I believe that was.
Look into that. No, I've been asked the question and I'm just curious when people are able to, you know, re-register and if there's gonna be the re-inspection and, and so on. And I'm assuming everyone keeps the same numbers they were assigned last year as long as they re-register, but.
Yes. Lori, do you have a timeframe for when our stickers will plan to be available for next year?
I think those are usually ordered in the first quarter of the year.
And recognizing that it's first year, uh, trustee Bluthart, we, we did plan as a team to get together and talk about any of the challenges that we had and, and discuss successes and see if there's ways that we need to look at amending the ordinance to, to make it a little bit smoother process for our residents. Um, I will say that, you know, there was, there was a lot of new golf cart purchases. So most of those were rather simple inspections. Um, you know, as yours, you ordered it, it came equipped with everything you need to be legally compliant. Um, we did run into some issues with the older retrofitted golf carts though. Um, so it's just whether, we need to evaluate whether or not there really truly is a need to re-inspect some of those things. Of course, there's always the opportunity for modifications, those type of things. You know, sometimes it, the simple changing of a headlight from, you know, regular headlight to a high intensity blue light can put them into violation of, of the inspection code, the IVC. So there is an educational component for the, and a safety component there that may um, drive us to, to continue with that inspection process.
Can you say the, the only problems with people with blue carts, right?
Only, limited.
Yeah, yeah, limited.
There's a lot of side breaking.
I'm gonna ask this question because my, it's actually my husband that asked me and I didn't, wasn't sure how to answer it. So being that they're expired, if you have someone like my husband that from time to time, if the weather is kind of nice, even though it's winter, he'll take it out. Is that what? I guess, is that? Yeah, or is there a violation for that? Or should they just?
By letter of the law. Yes, it, it would be outside the permitted use. That's all I'll say about that.
Any other questions or comments, or chief administrator? All right, thank you, sir. Um, finance director. Torres, do you have anything else you want to add? You know, you had a lot of stuff to talk about earlier. Okay.
Thank you. Just a reminder that, uh, we completed per board approval, the vacation payouts. So that means the accrual starts again on January first. So I just want to highlight that. Um, I know we anticipating some kind of policy. Also, I had a meeting, a great meeting with acting village administrator Gutcho. We talked about the budget. We talked about the importance and how strategy for twenty-four to make sure this board is involved and very educated, um, in each fund. So we plan to, um, prepare presentation step by step to provide a great understanding and allow the board to be more involved than ever in the budget process. And I also want to wish all of you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
And, um, in that regard, I'd like to just again, uh, I'll, after the new year, we'll start looking at dates and some in February for a, uh, meeting just related to budget, whether it's a evening meeting, a special meeting, just something just on budget. Okay? All right, any, uh, trustee reports? Trustee Pierce.
Uh, well, first of all, I wanted to mention, uh, what former trustee now constituent Mary Domeniac mentioned. Uh, the crosswalk on Main Street. Um, I think she's absolutely on point with that. And it's to, you know, not just some flashing lights that turn on when you press a button. Uh, I, I go to a lot of communities that major crosswalks like that have embedded, uh, flashers in the road so that it forms a, like a visual barrier across the road. So I, I would like, uh, just when we're budgeting, start thinking about that. Uh, because I don't think we want to do it halfway. If we're gonna spend the time fighting with the IDOT to get it done, we need to do it right. Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention was it is the Christmas season. It's very festive outside. A lot of people in Antioch have done a lot, a lot of efforts putting lights up around their house. I know, um, Oakwood Knowles specifically has a, um, a festivity thing on Friday night, uh, but they're really encouraging people to drive around and look at their lights. And I think if you go to the Oakwood Knowles webpage, it will even show you where all the decorated houses are. Mine's not one of them. I'm kind of, I'm buggy. Um, but in the meantime, drive around town, enjoy the lights. Appreciate what people have done. And as everybody else up here has said, and the, the acting, uh, administrator chief, what I don't know what to call him, uh, said, thank you to all the staff who's worked hard over the last year to make this a successful year for us and Merry Christmas.
And, and with the new software, we'll see who drove past your house.
Six to eight.
Um, all right, any other trustee reports? Otherwise, okay, trustee Mason. Sorry, 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 sorry. All right.
So I would like to see us create an ordinance for EV parking. The state allows us to do it at seventy-five to a hundred dollar fine. Section eleven dash thirteen oh eight. And the reason I say it, we've got two in the area, someone needs power to get home. There's, there's people parking that aren't EVs in the parking spots that we have in Antioch that are using it. And we should, we should be, uh, I want to give those people, they're at seventy-five to a hundred bucks. I think we should go to the max two to a hundred bucks.
Well, should you know, is there like a, if I had a EV and I just want to find a directory, is there a directory, a way to find?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
Most, most of them have.
Right there, okay, okay.
But, but if someone needs to get home, they could be stuck here for, and, and the charge is here. If they're lucky to get ten to eight hours to get maybe ten miles on a level two charge. But we have to do something for these people that, these, I gotta get home.
We have lots of shopping and dining.
Well, that's, that's the thing. You gotta park, park there and go somewhere. But you can't do that when some black trucks is there, a big F three fifty.
Yeah.
And then there's no way that's an EV truck. We gotta, we gotta protect the people that need the way to get home.
I, I, I will say I agree with trustee Mason. If it's an EV parking spot, it needs to be used for that. And if we have a penalty, we do that. Back to our handicap parking, uh, over a year ago, we changed the, the fine to three hundred and fifty dollars. I don't see a sign in town that says three hundred and fifty dollars. And I, I think we need to somehow to communicate with all our, our private properties that there is an increase in the fine and and, and work with them to post, help post those, those, those fines. Um, and just a fun factoid, the federal government on EV charters put aside seven point five billion dollars to have them installed. Not a single one has been installed yet under that program, but the money's been spent.
And it allows them, I sent the, the attorney, it allows them private property tickets.
Yep.
Just wanted to say thank you for Dennis and Public Works because some of my, um, commuter residents were sad that the train station had no decor on it this year. And I think the consensus is it's a Metro thing, but Dennis worked with, uh, Antioch Garden Club.
And fix the bathrooms.
And fix the bathrooms, yes, which people were very grateful just because it's the end of the line and a long day. So thank you, Dennis and Public Works.
All right, any other, uh, last call trustees?
I made a motion to go into executive section, the litigation, pending litigation.
Yep.
And anything else?
All right, uh, my motion trustee, uh, Pierce.
We're gonna work your session. Take an action after that.
For, for, um, potential litigation, pending litigation with action to take place after, um, executive session. Do we have a motion? A motion, Mr. Trustee Pierce, do I have a second?
Second.
Second trustee Bluthart, roll call, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're in executive session at nine oh three with action to take place after. All right, we had, um, back in the regular meeting, we had a motion trustee Pierce, we had a second from trustee Peterson, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, back in the regular meeting. Uh, the last item of the agenda is not in front of me anymore. It's consideration approval of a resolution authorizing execution of a settlement agreement. Do I have a motion in a second? Motion trustee Bluthart, second trustee Pierce, any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Six voting yes, the motion carries. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion trustee Mason.
Second.
Second trustee McNeil, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, meeting is adjourned at nine twenty-one.